Hello everyone, welcome to today's live stream. I hope you and you can see me, let me know if you can see me perfectly, just give me a thumbs up because I'm testing some new things in here. So if it is not working then I will know. So let me know if I can see. Hello Vishwas, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. Hello, thank you very much Leah, you are awesome. Let me know if you can see the chat, I would love to see. I will quickly check in if everything is streaming on all the platforms and then we will start, okay? So can you see me? Can you see my stream? I can see it on the YouTube, it's there. Kick is going good, I believe and I have saved, I found out how you I can do on Twitch. So I found there was just a button to turn it on. So finally Twitch videos will be saved also and for the first time I have set it up on the Instagram and Facebook stream also, the both way is streaming right now on Instagram and Facebook and TikTok is much more awesome because they asking for the approval of the profile. So they wanted to see if I have done something or not before. So that's that's actually good, safe to check. So we are live on vertical format also, that's awesome. I'm happy to see it and how you, how can I see hmm see it in I don't know if it's streaming on is on on Insta or not, but it is stuck basically. But yeah, it's it's streaming right now. So yeah, so let me know first, comment please comment if you can see me, you can hear me. I want to know mainly on YouTube if you can hear. Awesome, Vishwas, thank you very much for confirming this. Let me fire up the scene and we will continue from where we left off yesterday. And where does my scene? Just give me a second, I will fire up the scene. I haven't set it up vertical streaming setup, maybe I will do it while we are doing it. But yeah, that is there and I'm using actually Meld Studio which is a new app for streaming and have all the things. Maybe one day I will show you how it is. Okay, maybe I'll record a video and then I will show you how it works. Hello Vishal, welcome, welcome. Glad to have you here and Asheraf is here. Hello Asheraf. Great to have you here as well. How's the progress going? We'll check tomorrow. We'll have a shorter look up session. I saw Leah posted something. I haven't checked it. Yeah, I wanted to save the surprise for tomorrow. So yeah. So I have saved everything. I think my scene crashed I think yesterday, so it is not there. But yeah, we are making slow progress and things are going. I don't know if Instagram Live is going on, but Facebook Live is there which is good. And chat is not updating, why? On the maybe it is behind on Facebook. Yes, it updated. What? That's good, that's good. I like it. Okay and to all, there are not much messages from the other side. And I think it managed all the messages also in the same place which is again a good news for us. So yeah, we're learning new things every day through this. What do we have here? Which mine? Isn't that personal? No, I'm thirty two, I said. And sure, no worries, no worries. Just focus on your main central hero asset, I would say. So once you have that, then we can progress surely. Okay, our scene is here and I will see how it will be in our horizontal one because it's going in there. So here, okay, this one is not, we don't want to see and I will just let's just go like this for now. Let me just set it up to me, okay. So it's here. We'll go this one and we don't have anything in the vertical one. So what I'm gonna do, I will copy. Just give me a second, I will copy things from stuff and I will just set it up. And here it is, a chat we don't need there. Yeah, just a second. Because I'm doing it. Nice, so we have our display in here. I wish we could move the display while we do things, but this is how it will be for now. We can't help it. Okay, I will make it more bigger. So we keep it in the center only. I will align in the center. I'm fixing the vertical one, sorry guys. Oh. Good, yeah. So this is good, yeah. So yeah, this is our scene. We working on, we working on rock. So let's continue with that. We have rocks and pebbles and I was feeling like even if we make them if we make separate rocks, it will be much easier for us to manage. We can control this thing, otherwise we will not have, we will not have these floating things with that if we have it. So let's fix this, okay? Hmm to let me bring in the chat upfront, so I'm looking, looking at it. Oh Vishal asked, can I download a certain user portfolio? Yes, as long as you mention it and be you know reasonable about it. Oh, there is grass underneath there. Did we lose the layer paint from here? We need to check it. If I turn it off. Yeah, so there is this, we need to paint this. So I will go to landscape. Okay, and I will go paint. It's heavy streaming on all these different. So we have soil at layer five. Let's just paint this for now because we can create another one for the sand base. It's totally possible. But we definitely don't need grass underneath our river. We have river bed, river bed, we can you know generate the pebbles and everything automatically. We don't need to do it using PCG. Sorry. Like grass is coming on grass automatically like that, we can have pebbles coming automatically on the base of the river and we can give scale variations also. I can quickly set it up. We'll, we can set it up maybe. After, so let me just quickly. And then we had alpha also, so yeah. If we want to have, you know, like the Vishwas was saying yesterday, no? So we can have, we can make something in between. You know, with this like see there and some in betweens are there so that we can make easily using this noise mask and everything. We don't need to create that layer. So that was just proving a point like how to work with that progress process basically. That was it. Nothing fancy, otherwise I agree. We don't need it. And this is good. Okay, Leah asked, is there maximum amount of material layers that you can use in Unreal? What is optimum amount of material is used to use? I remember long time back, there used to be eight per layer, but I think in Unreal Engine four, they made it one twenty eight layers, I think. So usually I think the eight is optimal per tile because it's, it depends. I don't know how this works basically on the backend. But it's optimal to use less as possible because more is the thing, more data. So the more layer you will have, more work it have to do. But they have shown in the technical demo like the UK in open world demo, I think they have done it or maybe afterwards. Because you can use especially per tile, essentially, right? So I've shown you tile, right? These tiles, there are tiles. So each tile will have the similar number of things. Otherwise it starts to get heavy because there are calculations on the behind. I don't know exactly what happens, but now you can make I think one twenty eight layers. Or maybe more or little bit lesser more, but it was a lot. It was long time back also. So I don't think there is a trouble for adding layers anymore and honestly you don't need that many. That's why we have biomes and different tile have different layers. So we used to have conflicts, this conflict that there used to be more layer than you had to, you know, smartly divide that terrain tiles with the base of. And we had, we have grass on the river PCG still because we duplicated it from there. So we can fix that. Yeah, this is, sorry guys. So let me quickly hmm do the separation of these pebbles. So we have our content browser here and I think where from we got this? Did we get it from, did we move the rocks meshes? Let me see, um she's, is it not ours? To the church. Art biome, rocks, debris, no, we don't have it. So I think we got it from somewhere that we can see in our PCG. I'll select, edit it. And we have starting mesh spawn and this is, yeah. Here, it is from medieval environment. So these are this is the debris which is there. And we have other rocks also. I will say like we can utilize these. This, this one also fine as long as it's not floating. So there are three, four, five are there. We can use, let's try using this scatter one, okay? And and see if it make more floaty others. Let's see what my worry is basically these floating thing, some places. So it, it is less. So we can keep this one and scatter more of the other ones, okay? And this one we can give variation also. Let's use this for now and we'll turn off the, this center one or we can play with that and put the same for the river bed, we can make the different ones also. Okay, so where is the this is the one and this is the grass. So I'll take this one and I'll put that one in here. So now we'll have, you know, that pebbles and we also transform the points as per that. So I will make it two maybe four and there are here. And there are way more also. You see, that's why the PCG is cool. I'm liking it, learning new things every day in this. This is here and what we can do, we can, we do not project. So what we can do, we can project these also. So we don't get any trouble. What this transform was to make it so duplicate these nodes. We can give the same landscape data. In and out and then out in. Okay, so let's transform this one. Select these and first of all, we need to resemble it less fifty, yes, code. And let's transform them more on toward toward width of it and for now what we can also do is disable this node. Okay, and now we can easily select it, uh transform. Let's reset, it should be Y. Yeah, so minus two hundred to two hundred. Minus four hundred. Four hundred. I want it to be more. I just want it to be on the the river bed, let's see. Four, six or maybe like more small. Two to six, so we have more variation or we can duplicate it also. You know, we can take the same thing and we can transform our filter point and we can add more, more variations later on. Hmm this, double the count. A little bit less, yeah. So we have more variation of our pebbles and let's do the same thing for this. Seven to rest. One to twenty, maybe we will have more variations, too much. And so yeah, so this seems fine. We have a lot of and this one we can transform. And this is already going. And this also don't have the terrain blend. So we can easily get that to it also. And we know which mesh it is. We go there. Open it up, material. This is the material and it is master cliff rocks. This is, it is like this and we can bring it from our, let me open up our material and we'll just copy the nodes from there. Copy these nodes. Hmm to why is the YRGB is not there? There is some issue with this material function. So let's just go with this right now. I don't know what this the material function do, so. Yep, we have, okay, so we have and now we can control it in, oh, it's auto saving now. We can save it from our scatter easily. Let's look at the chat. Okay. Asha, do you think we need to keep it low for our portfolio piece? Or you need to focus on making looking good as an MAMER artist? Low you mean? The layers, number of layers? Yeah, uh yeah, so basically the, for the portfolio, beauty matters. So as, as good at looks is better. Okay, so doesn't matter at that point. So now we have these values which we can control. I love the, this should be the, like precise control is not there. So it should have. And we can blend this with noise mask also or with its own thing. So we have some this green, this green here. These are not touching, so it is there. Let's check in the Mavi shader, what is the tiling, the distance tiling and everything. Because it's taking from there and our texture is getting wala wala. So I think there will be distance styling, something like that. So tile link, let's search tile. There's nothing. Foliage distance blend, uh field length is fine. UV size is there, so let's make it one. So you will see, yeah, so see, it's, it's getting that in there. So what we need to do is only point five, no point five is fine. Otherwise if it feel like too small, we'll remove it as well. For now, this is fine. I'm looking from the corner. So show you. Yeah, not that odd, but I will show you. So if I make it one, so it will be actual scale of this. Which is not that bad and we have some something is there. So we can, you know, blend it with noise mask and I'll remember with this, we need to do something about it. The blending thing. It doesn't matter now, it looks good. And, and we can increase the distance of the grass also. So let's see if we have. We can control a direct setting directly from here. The foliage is there. Oh, there's nothing. Puddle is there, rock cliff. There are different layers then. I see it have eight layers only, so it is safe. It's a really, really old one also. I believe we can use distillation on our thing as well. See, now our path also have proper blending, but not the color. Color is fine, little bit different than this. I think it is all shading because textures we are using the same. So maybe it's a different shading in there. So if I check overview, what? Buffer visualization, oh yes. So we can see all, I wish we could click here and we can maximize this one like other map. This is opacity which is showing there, shading. This. That's a weird scene that. Roughness, yeah, roughness is definitely something here. Specular is the issue, you see. Specular here it is, not here it is grayscale. Roughness is almost there. Metallic is nothing is there, normal is good. So let's check what is happening in the specular for this. Sorry. Okay, so we can now basically forest path is there, update. Okay, so let's see. Vishwas is saying, is draw distance that you have to increase in the grass field? Yes. Basically grass you see is getting invisible here. I want to increase this. Maybe there are like multiple grasses in there. So at least some of them I can keep in less density basically till further distance. Maybe I will make another one which is just a card or simple flat. And that one we can, you know, use for the distance like billboard of the tree. And I really want to make this saturated, more saturated. So we'll see. They look dull from the distance also like this. There is no you know, contact shadow. It looks flat. So I will do redo the lighting also at one point. And we have our church also. Need love from a long time. We need to get back to that. But we are progressing, we are progressing. The scene is more important right now to focus because if we, even if we make it like distance church, it will be totally fine with it, you know? Because the foreground is what matters more at this point to me. Hmm spline mesh is a road mesh and we look at it. We open it up and here it is and we open the material. And let's open this and see what happened here. And specular is point five, let's make a zero. It should technically update. Buffer visualization overview is specular. So I made it zero. And now we can simply you know, bring it here and save. Or apply also, that's fine. I need to clean my PC also. Perfect. So it is there and the other one, I think the floor have something. Maybe map or something, but now it is much better. Let. Right? Now path is blending more better. Let's do this with this, 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 whatever this debris, this debris is from same our let's go to, let's close this. let's go to uh let's close this. Close this PCG. Rocks. Grass is this one? Yeah this is the one so in this let's go to this. And textures. And it's now the turn of the alpha it's coming from this mainly it's difficult to fix it. Well we have already some we have played with some of the things. Show you what we added. We make it one five. So it's we can and with you. So maybe we can fix it manually also. But for now it is not uh helping us that much. Hmm. Have we fixed it manually? Yes otherwise it's too much struggle and there is shading issue also. We use the same so I will just for now let's just reset all of them. Okay sorry it will not blend. But what we can do is is do we have uh RVT is here so just just cover it one point one and okay so we have basically now it's it's there it's blending okay. Okay so this is good uh needs to uh increase let's increase the shadow we had uh it open also. Hmm this one was the thing if we don't have we go to the master material and we change things in there. It would be have grass node is here I think we don't need to do the grass node I think we need to change it here inside uh I see there is a custom for custom layer so you can change the name layer name and you can change it. As per that you can use grass layer to grass and this and this name should match on the layer. Okay oh oh not the custom one. So I'll go to grass. So there are these basically we added a lot of. So and there is like start and end call. Hmm we can increase it. It will take some time. Yes like you see we some have we have some grass now at distance. So ten thousand and this is the large one so this is fine. I need to do the generic one. Then daily is fine Rudra is fine. This is generic. Okay and there's another generic so and we have you have to be careful actually with this one how it can it can be heavy you can see it is taking time to load up. See it refresh. Well let's keep this one same. So now we have uh this 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 sudden transition I want to change. Uh so it is coming from seven this is two thousand three thousand so I'll make it six thousand. So let it recalculate. And you can you know change the density also. You see this line right this there is this line here and then there is line here. It should be range basically. Placement digit everything we don't need to. And then there is scale also that also we can play around with. I think it's a tiny cluster so I think the this one is the biggest cluster so scaling this point matters more. Yep so it's much better so let's play from here. See the grass takes time to load up. Perfect. We need to add more detail like twigs and other stuff it look really flat honestly. But yeah this is much what is this? Why this is here? Yeah definitely there is no collision but it's blending right see it's how it is blending which is better. Okay fine we'll uh so we'll continue just give me I need a tiny break okay and we'll continue afterwards okay. Uh let's uh come back to chat and see uh Leah asks uh would you be interested in doing NINET four day approach at some point? This actually is NINA foliage that's it's pretty dense uh trees and grass. And I'm trying all the workflows. But let me know if there is anything specific you want me to answer I will surely okay. Uh just give me just give me quick five ten minutes I'll come back I need quick break. Okay so I'll be right back.
Okay thank you thank you Ashraf. Okay yes uh that is awesome I have to check back and see how you uh created the NINET foliage then. So mainly uh there is nothing difference uh in the NINA foliage it's just high poly. Uh there are few things which uh when we create a NINET was uh wait wait uh uh was uh more important was uh basically mesh basically uh NINA did not like uh alpha. So that was the main issue we were facing when we were creating NINA foliage. And if you see this this one have alpha I believe so if I show you uh wireframe you see? Is it not there? What why the wireframe is not there? Is it too dense? It's not supposed to be. Hmm okay wait. What I can do is I can show you in the content from content browser let me open up this tree. Hmm by Holmes trees. Now you can see in the back la maybe you will update at one point uh we made it using plant factory. Hmm then now is it taking or not? It's a weird way of showcase a wireframe. Tiny branches it is showing but I think these uh these one are alpha cards. For now you see this is basically mesh cards in here each one is basically a card with alpha uh if I show you how the texture is texture is like this. Right and each uh one is mapped on these things right this is how it was in plant factory so we made it uh based on that. Uh and yep so this is basically each are different. And how many polygons are there? This is already like four hundred thousand four hundred fifty thousand triangles. Phew yeah it is pretty dense. So what we can do if we want to we can reduce the number of leaves but make it mesh. Right uh and and with this type of uh you know shapes we might have to create more dense so we can use maybe tiny alpha with more geometry so we have less overdraw. Uh so we need to test that uh still honestly. So which one is more heavy and which one is not but for now it is able to handle. But it's it's scream less than uh my shader things my shader thing make it scream more. Yeah and we can see what is wrong with this also. So let's buffer visualization. Again this one also has spec specular issue here you see specular is there and there is some specular is on the base but it's not on our we made it zero so we can check both of them and here roughness is also different. So we definitely need to make it blend using our dirt so we can maybe mix our dirt and this again using hide blend we can do it. Normal we haven't done it so maybe we find a way how we can blend the normal corners. Uh we 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 can transfer the normal details on top of this also so I think will help. But that is not set up yet. Uh what does and what is this opacity? This okay 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 this is uh for our yeah here you will see see the leaves are have opacity and shading and you know there is a shadow complexity. And we have to maybe I'll search complexity. Yeah there's shadow complexity. You see and from here you will know what is bad what is good okay. So red is bad which is mostly our terrain. Right see the terrain is pretty in the bad space. And our 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 shaders are on in between. Foliage is good. Because there's nothing much it's simple shaders. And I think because we are using I think landscape blending that's why these all assets are basically bad. Yep and why these pebbles are bad I don't know should not be. But this this landscape is the mainly bad uh because we use there it works overall. But I wish like if it is bad then there is at least displacement and everything and why this is bad I don't know. Because this is just a simple shader for now. Maybe it's geometry. See optimization. And let's see with the quads that's not needed. So yeah so this is the shading complexity you can see how uh things are there hmm. This mesh density basically this is for the lightmap I think. To the only for the static meshes it's showing up. How much time it is so How much time it is. So basically for the light map, the baking and everything, it should be correct. So yeah, we can do that also. Uh but yeah, that is there. This is path tracing, let's see. Oh, it is screaming. If it is doing in the scene, then why it is screaming that much? Okay. There is path tracing and then suddenly it become black. Okay. So path tracing is not uh that's why so there is path tracing but why it is ah okay, so we have to okay, so pa- this is not a option, this is just a you know G I render basically. So we have to turn on hardware accele- acceleration and other stuff. But you see, the it will be much shadows and everything will be much better than before. Look at that. It taking time. We need to turn on hardware acceleration, uh Nvidia hmm you know GPU and everything. We haven't done any setting yet for anything. So yeah, we supposed to get much crazy screams like this. Yeah, once everything is there, it will be much better, I believe. What happened? And it went more bad. Okay, right? So the shadow and everything is not there, but once we turn it on, we can go through the path tracing also. Okay. For now, let's just roll with it. Now let's get back to the rocks and cliffs which I really want to fix. What if we created from scratch? We had something, a basic shader made uh previously. Let's see if we have it still. Uh master materials. Do we have rock here? There is a rock C one which we copy. Ah there is rock. Here this is our rock with the simple blend with some color variation. And what is rock two A? With what is color blend? In there. And do we have any other? Nope. So we will take uh one A maybe, okay. So we already have uh this thing. And now we can add uh what is blending as well as uh you know hmm our top down blend. So let me put the right textures from the start. Maybe it is supposed to be this. But we have landscape textures, rocks, rocks is this one. Should we use cliff? We should use cliff, no? So it's better to use cliff. And this is D R O, so we need to change that also. And just to s- show you once again what those maps are. So D is just like, I don't know what it is. It's not depth or and there supposed to be roughness but feel weird. And blue is A O. Green is it is supposed to be D R roughness but it feels weird. And this one, let's just go with what it is, what it says. Specular is point five, so here also. Roughness, embed occlusion. And uh we'll add another layer. And we had uh moss also yesterday, so we can you know incorporate our moss in there. So if you give me a moment, let's uh grab moss. I'll get it to our church textures, landscape textures. I will create a new folder in there called moss. Add it in there. So this is concrete moss. Okay. Uh let me fire up Substance Designer also. Just a moment. We had to fix the texture also, like while we are it, we will fix the textures also. So I will simply go to this. We say, okay, we can a selection, export and uh landscape texture, we can call it path rocky zero one. S- uh and where did our Substance Designer go? Let it open up. I mean what I will show you. Maybe this is the color I really liked in the thing and this is the moss material we downloaded. So A O, this is displacement, normal map, we can add more. And this is roughness, roughness and everything looks the same. What upon Substance Designer? Why is it taking so much time? Yeah, here it is. So I'll open this one. Let it open up, close this one. We'll fix this one also, we'll uh use the same substance graph. This is the one. And uh we can blend in this one and don't have anything in there. So first let's make moss. So we have, we need to make uh D R O map. And I don't know what D R O map is. So if you look at uh our other map, we are blending height with with the alpha. So we can do that if we need to. Or we can save it in our landscape texture itself. Okay. And now let me grab displacement. Let's grab here, link resources. Now and we take blend and this background foreground and we try different method. I think there is no so this random X and let's do just overlay on top of that. A little bit of this. Okay, so the main thing stays the same and we have some variation on top. And our normal map is like that and we can make it actually. You can say height to normal world unit, we give it height. And also it is blur, crispness Q, take it yes, so you can, we get this basically. Now we can, you know, increase the depth also. If you want more prominent of surface and then we can, there is blend normal also. Hmm a normal blend. And uh I think normal B G is this one. This one and it's here. It's there but like I never like it, but I use the normal blend back and thus I now use overlay. Okay, so simply. Or you can reverse it also and you can we can get all the depth part, how much we want more prominent. So this normal is there. And roughness is I have a doubt, little bit. The darker part I don't want that much. Let's just roll with it for now. This is height. So we need to make D R O and we say A O. And we put this and we get some A O. Okay. So we take R G B A merge. This is D, I don't know what it is. So let's just put height in there. Here is our D R O and for alpha, we can take uniform color. And make it white. Okay, so it's good. Now we have all of them here. So we'll just save. Landscap texture we have moss. And in moss we'll make, give it name T moss zero one this color. And we make it D R O. And and a normal map. Good. And let's uh fix the other one. Landscape path rocky and Substance Designer. Here soil. This is what we need to blend it with. So just, I will just for the sake of graph, I will take it here. On this one, where is our so just to you know make it blend with it first. H so maybe we can try doing it first. Look at that. And it's going way beyond. Why is it happening? Let's see. Is it because this I also have alpha? Alpha split, R G B, alpha split, let's see. Nope. This is what I don't have. What's the issue? It's it's weird this thing. Okay. What I can try? Let me take a level. You know mask out the brighter part. Grainier map and let's try playing with it. Right, so it's basically you know, so we created the color basically from our thing and then we can blend basically the two colors. Let's say overlays too much. Is dodge another thing? Maybe just keep copy and simply add on top. We still have if you if you want to, you know, do some variation, we can still do it. And let's take, I'll show how. We can take uh different grain map and we can clear all. You know, we can pick for this. And we have this. And now we can, you know, blend. This is background, this is foreground with this. Okay, and opacity we can control. If we want some you know, variation. Okay, so rocks are different. We there are multiple ways we can, you know, we can do random So rocks are different, we there are multiple ways we can, you know, we can do random color variation and other stuff as well. So I think it is fine for now. So it's good, moss we have also and we also have textures. Path rocky is still large extension issue. Content browser here. Moss. Path rock is here. So first let's fix that and let's close these. It's here. Slow slow down, slow down. Why it's slowing down? Yeah, this is when we build the rebuild the N N N meshes, our thing will be gone. And this is key. So let's see in it's matching, it's here many, see the specular is again the issue here. Rest everything is good, roughness is same, color is same, specular. So we know where it is coming from, let's take the master and specular we don't have, we have like a zero. Or maybe we keep it point one. It will not make zero at all. Screen screen. Maybe we can invert it and put inverted roughness map in there. That will be fine too. There is thing called uh minus, one minus which is kind of inverting, so I'll take this and I'll put that as specular. And also I will do in our try to do this in all of our shader which we have. Maybe we will get something, I'm not sure. So this is here and we made uh, here specular is coming in this, this is our master material for landscape. Specular we have filled. And we had another one, right, we made zero here, so it's again take the roughness and we'll see, yeah, if if that works, I don't know. Uh specular we have some word with, what is this? Cliff rock. Does it have specular here, see this one has specular, so let's basically um save current as twenty four and it gonna take some time. So meanwhile we can check the chat.
Uh yes, exactly, I have been using Houdini tool to trace the opacity map, to cut out the leftover alpha map, looks of yeah, the I still need to learn a lot of stuff in Houdini, I'm really slow, maybe I will reach out to you. Uh sorry I did not reach out afterward, I saw your message but I forgot to reply. But yeah, really, you can really help me, you know, get up and running with Houdini. Uh and at the tool uh Natsura you have suggested yesterday, like I want to get into it. But before I need to, you know, get into Houdini and try out stuff, have you tried Natsura, yeah? If you have, that will be awesome, like you can show me some basic stuff, how to do it, I haven't uh tried it at all. Uh it's still experimental, so I'm always yeah, I I've seen, I've seen people doing it uh in Houdini and making it cut and making topology properly for that. I think Natsura guys also have made it, I think, but I'm not sure. Uh shader complexity look good on foliage, I assume landscape is higher complexity because the mix of material blend and four textures. Yes, definitely, yeah, though uh foliage does not have anything, it's just textures, that's it, and no no, you know, specific uh stuffs on top of it, it's just textures directly going in there. Um yes, I have tried it, but I've tested out uh, I would to test out the conversion, yeah, definitely, like share share me or share your working progress in the in the channel or uh send me a D M on LinkedIn, show me what you made. Uh even that much is enough, uh we could jump on a call some other time when you are free, uh let me know. So we can have a short call on Discord and you can show me how to start with that. Okay, so I will next time I will do the stream here and we will just try it out live, okay? I really appreciate it, come on, save the map. Moving on, when I save as the map, it takes a lot of time. Is there anything uh uh so uh basically the for uh the plants and everything, I have bunch of things, like I was using Plant Factory because SpeedTree I'm trying to avoid now. Uh because of the experience I got with it, I love SpeedTree, but the licensing thing is weird, some people are accepting it, some people are not. So I'm trying to cut it down, uh to not fully use it. And also with SpeedTree you cannot sell the asset creator with SpeedTree, so I have avoided it. Uh so when I was looking for this, that's when I found Natsura guys and that's when we even came close uh and started talking about it, because they were also making some solution for it. And I have met the Grove creator also, Vibrant, uh the creator of Grove, he's awesome also. Uh it's something similar, he made it for uh the same engine for um uh Houdini as well, so which is awesome. Uh need to try that as well, uh but it was like super high poly trees before. But now with Unreal Engine five, I think it's not an issue to use uh that many uh you know polygons. So hybrid trees are good also, the same way the Plant Factory was like creating like cinematic trees. Uh but uh was really outdated U I and tough, hard to use functionality. But they have fixed a lot of things and uh now it's free. So I started learning it and I learned it a lot and now I'm loving it. So like that, I need to, you know, revamp with all the different tools are there, there are like three ones, like tree eight is there, sapling for blender add-on is there. So I'm focusing more on geometry nodes and, you know, more technical stuff. But I need to go through all of them, I recently saw applied for a foliage artist job, uh which were looking for grow effects. So that's uh another one. A plugin for three D S Max, it was standalone also. But I was trying to create things with the Blender's geometry node, so my focus is that, uh to create. And we had something I I made with my one other friend, we made a simulation tool, we gave a talk at Blender conference also around uh for that. And it is like something similar to Natsura, but using geometry nodes. So it was like a little bit conflict, uh that's why also I did not try it in the start. But then uh he said uh it's okay, you can uh go ahead with both of the side, like it's okay, I understand you also have your own add-on uh in progress. So that can be totally, you know, uh it's totally the same thing, it's like the conflict of interests basically. So yeah, so that's uh that's when I started again, when he was okay with it, like I'm using Natsura and trying it out. Oh but then I got busy and I didn't try it last year also, but this year I want to. And uh from next year definitely gonna be. It's taking time to save, that's why I'm still trying to hold the conversation, it's still saving. Don't know what it is saving, so it's weird. Uh so yeah, so if there is anyone have any question, uh please ask me, I can quickly check on the chats, how they are going. Uh I'm to definitely sure they will be good. Yep, uh there are few more people, so yeah, if if there is uh, if I think this gonna take time. So maybe I will uh take my leave for today. Uh if uh because I don't know how long it will take to save, if it saves quickly, I will finish up some things uh today. Uh just the textures and shader things and test it out. And I will start tomorrow with the the same from here. I'm doing it every day because I want to finish it before uh tenth of November, because I'm going to India. And I don't know how much I will be able to access my system, because I have to work remotely. I will uh keep my P C on and then I will, you know, accept it remotely from there and I don't know how much that will be feasible. But I will try to do live streams in general uh through my laptop and try out all these different tools, that is still possible. So we'll but heavy stuff like this is definitely not possible. Um yeah. That's why I'm trying to finish it, I'm doing uh daily streams and trying to finish it as soon as possible, even if it's not super beautiful. I will just, you know, finish it off. Oh what, dry? Uh awesome, awesome, where are you from, if I may ask? Uh and if you are there for longer, then we can meet. Uh if they're, um I will be visiting different places, Bangalore, Delhi, uh Mumbai and other places, where are you from? Oh, you're from Lucknow? Okay, awesome, awesome, uh I was there in two thousand sixteen, I was teaching at Mac, so that time. So yeah, that is, I was there for, not brief, like for at least a year I was there. Let me save everything. I'm from Punjab, there is a small town near Ludhiana called Mandi Gubingad. Uh it's in the middle of, it's not in the middle of, uh but it's like thirty, forty kilometer from Ludhiana. Okay, so it's saved. Okay, so I will show you. Um here, see, so here specular it went black on some part, but in middle it is okay. Debris is better, it's blending better, we have some highlight which is fine. And uh roughness looks okay. But we can blend with the other things, because we did not fix the roughness for this map, for its map, so we can fix that also. Uh and I believe we can do directly that and the color is good. So if we look at just the color, color is good. And yeah. And if we go again, you can go to buffer visualization, like you make it full on roughness, you see this is how it is, so what we can do, we can quickly, which one is it? Too many things, I'll close some of the stuff. I saved it, so why it just turn off? I save all everything from the content browser. Would allow to apply the changes, yes. Okay, we have to do apply also, that's weird. Save should automatically apply, no? It's not a blueprint that we have to compile. It's not bad even heavy, with how much it is. Come on, save it. Now it will save. Oh, it's like auto-saving. This is, we have this. Where from is specular and everything is coming? Are they creating it in the material? There's roughness. Yep, so we can control. It's weird, I think it's uh precisionally created. Okay, good. Okay, this is matching and this we can move. Yeah, so we're working on rock shader. We've came a long way from, we will fix next, uh we fix the textures. So this is good. It's mobby, tellable. Scatters. Let's keep the river on. And we needed to we have, we have our master materials and we have an okay one, yes. So I think we have world position. I believe this is the or maybe object info. Last, do we have info? Data. Object data, mesh data, something like that. Object position. So it could be any, it's absolute, this is object position absolute, we can see how it is uh in the deck ocean also. So how we can see it is basically snow, this is also so you'll see. Here is material input snow Here is material input snow mask. This is styling. Cheap triplanar. Snow mask is good, but when it is input. Yeah yeah, yeah, I I got that idea. Object invoice there, but like we something like that we had here also. Wh- which tells uh which direction our asset is, so it's something like that, I think it's uh let's see in the moss. This is a lot of lot of thing. Material import and then we have moss mask. And moss mask is coming from here height layer. And this what is color? Up mask is here. Hmm there it is. It's coming from vertex color. But how do the upward? We'll see. It's that we'll see, uh so basically what we can do for now uh before figure, I think it was like absolute world position only and then or we can I think there was different node to make X Y Z also. Hmm let's say X Y. This world position also. There is a there is a way to basically I forgot how you can basically take this and you can separate out the channels. For now we have vertex colors somewhere here. So for quickly thing, we can take vertex color. Okay, and we say okay wherever we paint uh you know red where we get the moss. So we can take the final and let's bring in the moss. Hmm to look at this one here and we call it moss. Moss. And we have our moss already. Let's take this one also. And put moss normal map. Take the red vertes color. Or for when to see which one is which so we can basically you know this is from before after enter normal. To see which one. Because by default everything have a color. So it will be making everything mousy. Yeah so what we can do is uh invert for now. We inverted, so white will be black, black will be white. You see, this is coming now. Let's see, see this is also individual, let's take this one. Create material instance. And we can move it there also. There's nothing much in here. Not in here. But in in rocks here. This M I can do this twice now. How did it let it happen? This is also M I rocks, M I M I rock, I think it's a rock. And I can just assign it in the scene and see how it looks. Ah okay, because this one have uh vertex color. So it is there, so what I can do, I can do this and put an assign on this one. Yeah this one don't have any what does color I believe. Right, cool. So we have all of them and then we have morsals though and the rock we need to assign. The cliff. Okay, so this is there and now let's uh see if it let us paint. Not letting us paint. Need to see what's the issue with this. In our shader we can do styling. We can do triplanar also. Triplanar shading and then we blend on top. I think this one have normal map so we can blend the normal map. And edge highlight and other things. But we definitely need to polish this. What we can do also, I can inside here. Let's try putting upward blend as uh moss in here. Moss. Ooh too bright, too bright. And there is the tiling, I don't know. Too saturated actually. It's like this, just leaving behind everything else. But where is the tiling for this? Tiling. Much better. And also I think it's too much saturated. So we can simply do it in designer and then we can moss. And auto-saving is there. Coloration is there. Yep, more it's better. But still not satisfactory. Uh styling also too much. Is it because of the shader? Yes, definitely from this. It's working. I was checking R V D, but this uh blend is pretty crazy. So we can we maybe do the reset the mine is like this this sharp thing. Over layer features edges. It's nothing, layer A layer B. Yeah we'll see, we'll see. Like on this also like we can do P C G thingy, we can put things on top of it easily. So why what is color is not working is a question. Let's see. But if you're not able to paint, that would be a trouble for us. Will not be good. Okay, so yeah, so this is good for now and uh I can now first save all. Then I can show this rebuild thing and what it does, it rebuild the thing but uh it uh really you know does not work. See, come on. Hello Vikram, good evening, how are you? Welcome, welcome, thank you very much for joining in. We are almost finishing, uh let it save. And then we'll see if this works. So let's now where did it go? Now the error is gone. And you see? Our terrain is also gone. So what I can do is uh mm go to landscape and then come back. And brings out landscape back, but it is not a linear landscape. Because uh we can see it, see it saying actors within animation need to be rebuilt. So if I go in and go through triangles everything else have it but not the landscape and if we do rebuild on landscape the landscape just vanish and don't show up which is not nice. Yep, so again you see triangles are gone. Yeah. So yeah, we have bugs, we have bugs. It's okay. There come this name. Okay. Let's ignore this for now. But we need definitely need to have uh we created some variation in the grass. We have some large and small, but we have other ones also which are not visible, but when they will have colors it cannot be uh we're gonna be crazy. Okay, so yeah, that's it, I don't think this gonna be fixed anytime soon, it's a bug uh we are getting. And sound is low. For me it is high. I listened to it yesterday, it was it's here, it's here see. So yeah, uh it is on max, I think on the bar, I don't know if I can raise it more, I don't want to. And other than that uh our speaking is low, uh before that, just before that I was speaking low, so it could be. Uh there is saturation node, yes there is a saturation node in the shader, but I don't want to you know add that because more complication we just make the textures better. And fine, just came back from the office, awesome. Uh thank you for joining in, just after coming closer, I know nobody want to look at under engine again. But yeah, again guys, thank you very much for joining in today. Uh we had made some progress, we fixed some things and we're gonna continue it tomorrow uh with the same things. If I touch upon some things uh before uh I will let you now you guys know what I did, what I updated, so I will see you guys tomorrow. I hope uh you guys learn something new. And as always uh uh I will share the Topment link again uh if it's not there for next stream uh I can show basically. So we are closing up the stream, maybe I will start to do it in the start also. So basically now we can simply bring in people directly in there. So just bear with me uh just a moment. Now uh we have here we have Discord server, so if you want to join the bootcamp simply uh you come to join the bootcamp. Okay, and react to the message here. Okay, so I don't think in the react to the last message and you will get the access to the channel, that's how easy it is. So I think it's in here, I can move here. So here just react to the message in join the bootcamp, so I think it will be okay, okay? So yeah, so that's it uh in here and as always share the Topment link with all of your uh all of you, just second. I would send it through mail studio. Uh join. Okay, so it's not like uh we uh did not go to YouTube, why? Yeah. Okay, so yeah, so just all the things uh are uh here. Uh you can join the bootcamp and other stuff, other awesome stuff and yeah. Share it with your friends if they like it and uh and I will see you in the next one. Thank you very much again guys uh and asking awesome questions, it really motivate me and we talk about good stuff and we are making progress and if you feel uh something need to be polished and something need to be better there, you are welcome to suggest it, okay? So thank you very much again and I will see you guys tomorrow. Bye.